Yeah, we can.
Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is to receive a general manager's report, and we do have a few items. First of all, as most of you know, we recently celebrated our system's 20th anniversary. Now, even though we're 20 years old, we actually are one of the youngest transit systems in the United States, and we've been recognized several times as being one of the most efficient systems in the United States. And that's mostly due to the policies of the board. There are two things that you have elected to do that have made us, elevated us to that most efficient status. One is that we do not sprawl the system, we do not introduce a route unless we know we're going to have at least 20 passengers per service hour. And the other is that we've chosen to contract out our service, which allows us to turn over to firms, worldwide firms, who have the experience and expertise in actually moving people to do so. That is their business, and they do it efficiently. And as a result, we are recognized. To give you an idea of our growth over the years, in 1992, our transit system consisted of 21 routes. Today, we have over 35 routes, we have close to 4,000 bus stops, we have four transit terminals, three of which have significant park-and-ride facilities, and people do use them. We carry 178,000 riders a day, which is about 60 million people riding a year. So certainly, we have made our mark in Southern Nevada. As part of our celebration, representatives, including some of you on the board, came out early one morning, and we passed out over 600 donuts to riders who were grateful. And likewise, we made it clear to them, we are grateful to them and to our operators, because it is their feedback and their communication with us that allows us to continue to operate and be recognized as one of the most efficient systems. So, thank you. Our driver recognition program, we told you on a quarterly basis, we would like to bring to you and have you recognize some stellar drivers. So we have two drivers from First Transit and from Veolia today. We'd like to tell you a bit about them. First, with our Veolia group, we have Anthony Broyles and Donald Ford. Anthony Broyles, in the last 15 years, Anthony's become a positive fixture in the world of transit drivers. As an operator and a revenue instructor, Anthony always brings a positive attitude to work daily, of which he instills in his training of students. Customers often compliment his services, to which he humbly accepts as just doing his job. His professionalism and composure during challenges and ability to lead others by his example is to be commended, and we are proud to have him serve our riders, and we'll ask him to come up in just a minute. We'd also like to recognize Donald Ford. In his 19 years of service, Donald has provided an ideal visual image as to how professional operators should look and act. He is known for his pressed shirts, shined shoes, and the safe driving pins you'll often see on his lanyard around his neck, showing his dedication to safety. He also receives numerous compliments for his customer service skills and incredible professionalism from both riders and coworkers alike. We also have to note that both Anthony and Donald proudly display their million-mile patches on their sleeves. We are grateful for their dedication and commitment to our community and their combined 34 years of service serving as operators here in Southern Nevada. And if we could have them come up, we'd like to recognize them.
First, honor to God for being able to do this, and I sure appreciate it. It's been a fantastic 15 years. Thank you very much.
I know.
Yeah.
Thank you. I believe that first impression is maybe your last impression in customer service. First impression always comes first. Thank you.
I do. We got a couple more. All right, from our paratransit fleet with First Transit, there are also two candidates we'd like to recognize, Rodney Gall and Randy Johnson. Randy Gall is a veteran operator who has been providing professional paratransit service in Las Vegas since August 1997. Over the past 15 years, he has maintained superior safety and attendance records, and has received numerous customer compliments and commendations. Rodney has always shown great care for the well-being and safety of his customers, and this is evidenced by the patience, care, and kindness that he demonstrates on a daily basis. We'd also like to recognize Randy Johnson, who has been a professional paratransit operator since March of 2008. Randy has built a great rapport with his customers over the years and is always willing to help when needed. He is known for his conscientiousness when operating his coach, and has been proven to be dependable and reliable. Randy's very customer-oriented, and Las Vegas paratransit customers have been well-served by the quality service that he provides. We'd like to thank Rodney and Randy for their service to our customers, who sometimes need the most sensitive of operators to assist them. So if we could call them up.
Appreciate the award. It's a pleasure of serving people and doing customer service the way I like. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I enjoy my job. It's just, I just love it. Thank you.
We have one more recognition. We'd like to recognize our very own David Swallow, who was, yay, David Swallow! He was recently recognized by the state's Bike and Pet Advisory Board, and he was awarded for the individual employee category for demonstrating a significant effort to improving bicycling in communities in Southern Nevada. And for those of you who know David, he doesn't just do this because of his job. It truly is a lifestyle for him. He cycles regularly, and it is a passion. I think both he and his wife, who now is an employee at the city, she's with your public works group at the city, I think they have a marriage pact. They are going to make Southern Nevada a better place to live and work, and they are dedicated to improving quality of life here in Southern Nevada. So I'd just like to give him one more round of applause, and thank you for their dedication. And that concludes your general manager.
Chairman Brown, I'd like to add something to the general manager's report, if you don't mind. For those of you who may or may not have seen it, our general manager, Tina Quigley, was recently acknowledged by Vegas Inc. publication for some very important news, important to us as a community. She was acknowledged along with a number of other individuals who were equally distinguished as a mover and shaker in our community. The article selected, the Vegas Magazine, Vegas Inc., selected Tina as one of the top 12 business personalities for the year 2012, which is pretty significant. And she was recognized for her enthusiasm and her high-octane energy that's won her fans throughout Southern Nevada. Other nominees included Sheldon Adelson, Steve Wynn, Tom Skankey, Pat Mulroy, and Phyllis James, which is a distinguished group of individuals that we found Tina in. So just wanted to share that this is the article.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Congratulations, Tina. You're doing a great job of representing us here at the RTC. Thank you.
I appreciate it, and I noticed you left out Prince Harry. He was recognized as well, so.
I didn't want to point out that she is poised right next to Harry.
I know.
But I want you to know Tina's the one with her shirt on.
Well, in turn, I would like to recognize Vegas Inc. I have no doubt that Rick Valata, who is probably in the audience with us today, has a very keen understanding of the importance of transportation in building a strong economy and a diversified economy, and I very much appreciate the support and the recognition. So, thank you too. Yeah, thank you, Vegas Inc. And Deborah, you're fired.
You've got an evaluation.
All right, now that really does conclude your general manager's report, right? All right. Oh, Rudy, you're welcome. So with that, we'd like to turn it over to your item number three, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation's Director's Report.
Regional Business Development Advisory Council, and the RTC is a member, represented by Lydia Bulewinski, and also your agencies that you represent are members of that. And what that group does is try to increase the amount of contracts that we put out there to minority and women-owned businesses locally. So we're doing a lot of good effort in that council. And I would, just, one of the things that that council does is put out a report to the legislature each year on what each of our member agencies contract out to women and minority-owned firms. So it'd be good to receive that report so that all of you could see what your agencies and other agencies are doing. Another element of what the council reports is what the makeup of the workforce is in each of those agencies. So a lot of good information to the legislature, and hopefully, that's being put to good use as we try to improve those numbers. This week has been very busy for Nevada Department of Transportation. We had our Transportation Board meeting with our board on Monday, and then on Tuesday, we had a meeting before the Interfinance Committee meeting of the legislature. The issue of the Highway Fund cash balance came up at both of those meetings. So the Department of Transportation has seen a big downturn in the balance in our highway fund, and the revenues that feed into that fund are primarily the fuel tax revenue, but also Department of Motor Vehicles receives money from motor vehicle registration and driver's licensing. That goes to fund their efforts in implementing those programs, and also Department of Public Safety. But what we've seen is, since the middle of 2011, when the highway fund balance was about $275 million or so, it's been, we had our biggest construction year ever. We put that money to work to create jobs in Nevada, primarily in the construction sector where there's a big economic downturn. So now, we're at the level of bouncing between 30 to 90 million, but usually around $50 million in that highway fund. So a big spending, amount of spending occurred in that last 18 months, and with the balance being down roughly around $50 million, we've had to take some measures to look at where our costs are. That is, it's important for us to keep a balance that's enough to pay off our contractors if there was, say, a shutdown of the federal government, and we couldn't get reimbursement back from the federal government through the Federal Highway Administration. So that the importance of the balance of that fund was relayed to us through our board and also through the Interfinance Committee. Unfortunately, we have to look at where we're expending some of the state funds. We always maximize the use of our federal highway administration funding that we get for our projects, but we've had to send notices out to the RTC of Southern Nevada, Washoe County RTC, and the Carson City MPO to advise them that we have to cut back. In the past, we used to actually give state money to efforts to purchase buses. It was used for the match on the federal money that was used to buy those transit vehicles. So it's a very unfortunate but recent development, and I just wanted to report that, that I've talked to our staff at NDOT on measures that we have to take as a department to cut our costs, but still deliver services and deliver our projects to the public. And so we're focused on that effort. I'll have more to report on that in future meetings. But I think that we have pretty much flat revenue, so it's not the end of the world for NDOT. I just wanted to make sure that it's understood that we are going to continue delivering our programs. They're good programs that improve safety, provide mobility for the public, and will continue to work in partnership with the RTC of Southern Nevada, as well as the other metropolitan planning organizations across the state. Also, as part of our board meeting today, I wanted to follow up on a request that was made to provide some information on two very important projects down here in Southern Nevada. One is Project Neon, and the other is the F Street project. On Project Neon, what we're doing is improvements on I-15 from Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl. It includes widening the freeway and doing some additional bridge work to connect the HOV lanes on US-95 to the express lanes on I-15. So we'll have a quick presentation on that. F Street project is to reopen F Street. Now, it was, as part of the I-15 North design-build project, which widened I-15 in that area from Spaghetti Bowl to the north to Craig Road, we had some improvements to traffic. And typically, our traffic engineers see a solution, working in concert with the city of Las Vegas. They thought that it was a good solution that eliminated cut-through traffic on F Street, which is primarily residential area and has a park right there. We thought that that improvement, because we went through the environmental process, had public meetings, we thought that it was acceptable to the community. Then while we were under construction, we found that it was not acceptable, that we did not receive the input that we thought we had received through the public meeting process. And once we recognized that, we worked with the city and the legislature on the requirement to open up F Street back up to the community. So that project came about through a lot of public involvement, through the city of Las Vegas efforts and NDOT's efforts and participation with that collaboratively. We've got an agreement now that has been approved by the city council of the city of Las Vegas. So thank you for your efforts, both council members that are present today from the city of Las Vegas, for your efforts in approving that agreement, so we can go forward and actually put that contract out to bid. And the presentation will be more about the phases of the construction and how we're funding that project. So with that, do we have Cole Mortensen and Jenica Finerty are NDOT project managers. Cole is the project manager for Project Neon. I also wanted to, I noticed that is a consultant, CHTum Hills, in the audience too, just to give him a hand, John, thank you. And so, Cole, why don't you start with an update on Project Neon?
Okay, as Director Muff wanted mentioned, I'm Cole Mortensen. I'm the project manager for Project Neon. It's a big project, and I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, but we've got a lot of things to talk about. This slide is a little tough to see on the monitors here, but basically, what I'm showing you is the stretch of road that we have there on the I-15 from Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl is a problem. It's got about twice the average accident rate of the state, and it also is the most heavily-traveled route that we have in the entire state. We have Phase One coming in that we've been working on, some of the things that we're looking into, solving the problems that we have in that area. You know, we all have weaving issues. It averages about three and a quarter accidents a day through that stretch of road. So one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to connect the HOV system on US-95 to the express lane system on the I-15 with a bridge connecting the two. We're revamping the Charleston interchange so that it flows a little bit more smoothly. We're actually adding an additional access point down to Alta and Bonneville in that area. And then, as part of this project, in order to do that, we're having to close off the Wall Street connection between Western and MLK, but we'll be making better access solutions to that part of the city there. The ramps through that area are causing congestion. We've got weaving movements in that area that are causing congestion. And again, as I'd mentioned earlier, one of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to be putting more traffic into that HOV system, and we're going to be relieving some of that congestion at those interchanges there at Sahara and Charleston. That connection should take away a good portion of the traffic that's actually weaving across from the express lanes to try to get off on US-95 that's causing the majority of those issues in that area, and vice versa. We have several interchanges that are very close there. Sahara is close to Charleston, and that's close to the Spaghetti Bowl interchange. That spacing causes some issues for us when you talk about, again, the weaving issues with that amount of traffic. It's 270,000 cars a day. As part of this effort in keeping cars in the inside lanes in those HOV lanes, what we're going to be doing is we're actually going to be putting in a one-of-a-kind HOV direct-access interchange. And what this means is that the people that are in that HOV system will actually drop down to the ground level and have access to city streets without having to cross all the general-purpose lanes on the I-15. And so that's going to also help us improve safety and congestion through that area. Charleston interchange, I kind of say that tongue-in-cheek, because really only one ramp goes to Charleston. You know, in engineering, often the most simple solution is the best solution, and you can tell by that aerial photo that there's nothing that's simple about the Charleston interchange right now. One of the things that we'll be doing here with this project is we're going to be cleaning that up. It's going to function more like your typical tight-diamond interchange that you would expect to see, where you get off the freeway at one location, you can turn right, you can turn left, you can go straight on through and get back on the freeway at that location. So we'll be making Charleston interchange function much more smoothly, which, again, will help the I-15 traffic, as well as that Charleston traffic that gets bogged down around rush hour. As far as the city streets are concerned, there's a number of local access issues in there. Earlier, I'd mentioned that Wall Street connection between Western, Martin Luther King Boulevard, Western Avenue dead ends there at Charleston, Grand Central Parkway tees into Charleston. You've got Industrial Boulevard further to the south, or Industrial Drive further to the south that dead ends there as well. And then, to add to that congestion, you've got the railroad tracks at Oki, but we're going to be doing a number of things to try to help improve the connection, or the connectivity through that area, which you see here is the downtown redevelopment area that the city's been working hard to promote. The red stars that you see on that map are all areas where we're going to be improving the access down into the city's downtown redevelopment area. You've got Symphony Parkway. We're going to be rebuilding the structures that cross Symphony Parkway on the I-15, and we'll be doing the landscape architecture treatments to those structures. Alta and Bonneville, we're going to be widening through that area, as well as replacing those structures. Charleston, we're going to be making improvements on the interchange widening Charleston. You're also seeing a star down there at Industrial Drive. One of the proposals that we've had in the last year that just was approved by the FHWA is to actually connect Grand Central Parkway up and over the UPRR railroad tracks there to connect to Industrial, so that you'll have a connection all the way from Grand Central Parkway down Industrial, and that'll hit Frank Sinatra, which will open up that corridor all the way down to the backside of the casino, the backside of the strip there. We've also made that facility wide enough, at least crossing through to Industrial, that in the future, the RTC could utilize that portion for their rapid transit system. It'll actually have enough capacity to allow their dedicated lanes to cross Charleston and down into that corridor. Really, the most dramatic thing to show is this visualization. This is what the area looks like now, and this is what it's going to look like here after we get done with Phase One of the project. What you see in there, too, is Grand Central crossing Charleston, and then again, crossing the the railroad tracks and connecting to Industrial. That's really going to provide a lot of access opportunities through the area and really improve mobility through that region, and hopefully clear up a lot of the issues that we have on Charleston, as well as on the I-15. Right now, we're currently underway acquiring right-of-way for Phase 1. We have about 48 parcels identified. We've acquired 20 parcels. We have seven parcels in condemnation, and we have about 21 parcels in process, and we estimate rounding that up here in the next six to eight months. One of the things that I want to talk to you about as far as updates on the project is that, as Director Malfabon had mentioned, you know, we're just like every other agency, we're struggling with funding. We're trying to get this project delivered, so we're looking at all avenues that we can utilize to deliver this project. Due to the size of the project and the impact that it has on traffic, the pay-as-you-go option isn't necessarily the most effective option for us. To put that stretch of road under construction for several packages over the next 10 to 15 years is going to be very detrimental to the traffic on the I-15. We can do that, but it does add to the duration of the project, and it adds expense every time you break it into a smaller piece. One of the things that we've been looking into as part of this is, a little over a year and a half ago, we received an unsolicited proposal from a company wanting to deliver two phases of the project. And here I described Phase 1. The second phase that they want to deliver is Phase 3. Phase 3 really realigns the I-15 for future phases of the project, but it actually builds the Charleston interchange out to the full width and the full capacity that we had intended to have through the EIS process. This unsolicited proposal basically would have a private company come in, they would finance the project, it would be a design-build-delivery method, and then they would maintain and operate the facility for a period of about 35 years while we returned the payments. In June, we went before the Transportation Board, and we recommended moving forward with the development of an RFP for that project. So we'd like to further investigate how viable an option this is for the department. We'd like to put together what this project's going to look like, what it's actually going to cost us, and be able to make some more educated decisions here in the future. In the November Transportation Board, we went back to them. We further explained some of the analysis that we'd done and our reasonings behind recommending this, and we got approval to move forward with creating that RFP, to going out to the industry with an RFQ, to shortlist the proposals that would be interested in proposing on this project, and then to actually go out to industry review, to go out to see what the industry thinks of the project, what kind of feedback we get from them, you know, what the best project is for the state of Nevada. And so, over the next year or so, we're going to be developing that RFP. We're going to be working closely with our city counterparts in order to make sure that everything that, that we're working in concert with our local representatives, as well as the public and the other stakeholders in the project. So I guess at this point in time, I'd open it up to any questions.
Comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you, good to see you again. And they've actually had excellent meetings at, for the neighborhood. I know Lois and I have been at several of them, and I just want to commend NDOT. It's been the better outreach that I've seen in my years, so thank you for that part of it. Just a couple of questions, because I'm trying to remember back. The businesses on Charleston, wherever they put the light, were wholesome lofts and low as that may be displaced. Is that part of the business group that you're having to look at, or the replacement of the light? Because I know they had to pay that based on the city of Las Vegas direction.
The business there at wholesome lofts, they're actually going to be staying there. The businesses directly to the west of them are going to be relocated as part of the project.
Okay, the old mall?
Yeah, that signal's going to go away, but the wholesome lofts businesses there in the old bakery, they'll have access from the connection between Charleston and Grand Central Parkway.
Okay.
It'll actually be, yeah, it'll be a road on the backside of the property, rather than directly off of Charleston.
Okay. And then the church will not be impacted, I believe, or will it?
As part of Phase 1, the access along Desert Lane, yeah, is changed. Desert Lane is actually going to be connected through to Martin Luther King Boulevard to the south. As part of Phase 3, I don't believe that will be impacting the church property there at all.
Okay, so they'll just have to get used to going in on a different side of it?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I know that some of the residences, out of your 48 parcels in Phase 1, remind me how, approximately, how many are residential versus commercial?
I believe that we had about 15 residential.
Residences?
Yeah, and the rest were commercial.
And I know one issue that came up at the meeting was making sure we had enough of a buffer, and I know sometimes you got money, so you can only buy so many properties, but I think that was an issue for those that closest affect the Shadow Desert Lane area. I just inherit, re-inherited that in the redistricting, but it used to be in my Assembly District, so I'm very familiar with it, so.
What we're looking at doing is through the residential areas, we are going to be doing the sound walls with the aesthetic treatments on the I-15. As we get down into the residential areas, most of them will end up having, with the exception of the residential areas there south of Oki, we'll have that Martin Luther King Boulevard Desert Lane connection through there. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be taking the remnant parcels, and we're going to be doing a landscape architecture treatment to them, a low-maintenance treatment and...
Some of that's a historical area, so we may want to talk about, we're doing a little experiment in Clark County with some local architects that are actually preserving some of the historical part architecturally, so they might, there might be an interest to work with you on something along those lines. Okay, so let's see. Remind me how much then you have available for Phase 1, or you need for funding-wise?
Oh, for funding for Phase 1, the construction portion of the project's going to be right around $280 to $300 million. We just did a, the NEPA reevaluation, and through the efforts of the project team over the last year, we've managed to reduce the cost of Phase 1 by about $65 million, which has been a big effort for us, and we've been very proud of that. And the reevaluation also saved about $200 million off of Phase 2, which we've also been very proud of.
Okay.
And so overall, you know, we've really been looking for ways that we can make it a better project, improve the mobility and the access in the area, and just really see if we can tie it all up in the most efficient manner that we possibly can.
And then finally, remind me how much you have available in capital funds?
Right now, again, that's one of the, that's one of the big issues for us. Right now, we have programmed the $173 million, I believe it's in that range, yeah, for the right-of-way and utility relocations and the engineering effort for Phase 1. And at this point, we really haven't yet defined how we're going to fund the construction for Phase 1. That's where this private-public partnership, the unsolicited proposal that was submitted, is helpful for us, because it actually provides that financial vehicle that we'd be looking for. One of the advantages of that private-public partnership is that, once we, if we get to financial close with a firm, and it's the right project at the right price, they'll actually go out to construction, and we don't make a payment until that facility is available to the public, which means for the four, give or take a year, years that it's under construction, we can actually be delivering projects with our typical capital program in the meantime. So we'd have the benefit of delivering almost a half a billion-dollar project right here in the center of Las Vegas, in addition to our normal capital program.
And so, in the public-private component, do you need legislative change to be able to allow that to go?
No, at this point in time, we have the ability to accept an unsolicited proposal, to review it, to analyze it, to either choose to go with that proposal and negotiate it. We can reject it, or we can do what we're choosing to do, which is to go out into competitive procurement. So basically, we take their proposal, we say, hey, this is a great proposal, we think this is a good idea, but maybe this is a little bit more what we're looking for, we can change components of it, and then what we're going to do is just go out in an advertisement like we would with a typical project, and then come back and select a lot along the lines of how we do a design-build project.
Design-build, okay. And then finally, for disclosure, I know Laura Fitzsimmons very well, and I think you hired her to do some of your takings, or for lack of a better term, condemnations. I'm in domain, thank you. Ooh, that was not politically correct, was it? But I think that that was, if you can work to make sure that people get the right value out of their properties, I think you're better off in the long run, so I think that was probably a good hire, so. Thank you.
Councilman Ross?
If I could, very quickly, before Councilman Ross, I wanted to respond to that question about the funding available. The way that NDOT looked at the affordability of this project was to look at how much money that we spend traditionally in certain programs, and we wanted to make sure that with the available funding, after you take off all the additional funding that we receive from the federal stimulus, or from the Las Vegas Convention of Visitors Authority bonding for transportation on I-15 South Design-Build project, take all that extra money off the top, go to your traditional funding sources, from the federal and state gas tax primarily, and then take off what those traditional average spending levels have been in those programs, and then see what's remaining. That would be used to fund the availability payment, so an annual payment to the private company that finances the project. That would be over a longer term, to be negotiated with that, with that financial entity. But the idea was, traditionally, with the state, we sell bonds for a 20-year term. If we go into a financing agreement with this entity, then we can go with a longer term, but with an affordable payment on an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And really, that's exactly the explanation I was looking for to understand how that was going to work. I kind of was formulating that in my mind, but Cole, great presentation. I think all of us recognize the importance of this corridor for commerce, the economy, to move goods and services and people back and forth, north and south along that corridor, and the US-95, north and south as well. So thanks for this presentation. I think it's kind of important that you not only just tell us as the Regional Transportation Commission, but I would suggest, perhaps, Director, that this presentation be given to our respective councils and commissions, so all of us have an understanding of Project Neon. Certainly, the city of Las Vegas, we're keenly aware of that, but more so for the public's benefit, so they know what's coming. Because you know what it's going to be like, once we start construction on that corridor, it's going to be a nightmare. We're just concluding the widening of US-95 out in the northwest, which is phenomenal. People are certainly happy that the cones are starting to slowly go away, and that project is getting wrapped up. But you, you understand, as NDOT, the importance of trying to keep people moving while under construction. And Cole, when you suggested, when you made comment that you're going to rebuild those structures, right there along Symphony Park area, I mean, that's going to be huge. That's a huge undertaking, this entire project, and then the rebuilding of the Charleston interchange, if you will. This is going to be affecting all of our economies tremendously, and all of our residents and our constituents. So I think the important thing is get this message out there to the public to the best of NDOT, certainly Regional Transportation Commission's ability, and our own ability as individual elected officials from the entities we come from.
Absolutely. I've been, as was mentioned earlier, I've really been working hard to get out to our stakeholders. We've had a number of public meetings. We're working on getting back out here, especially as we move forward with this private-public partnership. You know, with this project, when I first started managing it, one of the things that really opened my eyes was the fact that our typical project website gets 200 to 400 hits a month, this one gets 6,000 to 8,000. And so we're really working hard to get out to the public and to make sure that they understand what we're doing, when we're doing it. We've got Facebook and Twitter up. I'm hoping that we can get information to people on a daily basis to let them know if and when we have closures, you know, to remind people of detours. I'd like to work with the local businesses to make sure that we can put on our website how to access those businesses and that they're still open. Right now, we're currently working to put together a page on our website that'll actually show where those businesses that have been displaced have been relocated to, and those types of things. So we're really working to get out to the community to make sure that people understand the project and understand what's coming.
Well, through the chair, and it's something that Commissioner June Kiliani had mentioned, that those businesses along that corridor, I know, Director, you and I have had this conversation about some of them kind of being in limbo. Where is NDOT? When is this going to happen? And I think in your presentation, you showed that maybe 20 parcels you're still working on acquiring, and I'm going to use the word acquire, Commissioner. No, that's okay. But I think that communication with those businesses is paramount. I mean, that has to be done, so they're not sitting out there limbo. You know, do I expand? Do I contract? Do I move? What do I do? Because I'm waiting on NDOT to make a decision here in regards to Project Neon. So continue what you're doing and work harder, and faster.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I just wanted to add that I agree with, first of all, you've done an excellent job in your meetings. It's been a confusing time, and it's been a lot of years, and so there are a lot of questions out there in the community, and I think in the past months and recent years, you've just done an excellent job in handling the information. I also represent that ward area that Chris was talking about, near the First Presbyterian Church, and right near there, we mentioned at every single meeting we attended, and we mentioned personally, there is that one house that's left when the rest of the block is gone. And we've asked, could they take that one house, so they're not isolated? And I know they said they were going to do it in Phase 2, but we don't know exactly when Phase 2 is going to start, and they'll be sitting there for some time.
I have good news for you.
That's what I want to hear, is good news.
With the, with the approval of the NEPA reevaluation, we took another look at those properties that we had identified as being needed for the project for Phase 1, and with most of the properties, if we were going to impact that property, say by changing its access, but in a later phase, we were going to need more of that property, we've decided to look at that property as though, you know, we're taking, or we're acquiring the whole thing, rather than hitting them once and then coming back in Phase 4, Phase 5. With the reevaluation, they would be impacted by Phase 2 as well, and so they were identified as being a parcel that we would need to acquire here as part of Phase 1.
Well, this is a big project. It's going to be a magnificent thing for the community, and you've worked very hard, and I just appreciate so much the efforts that you've made to get the information out to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I might just add, you know, we've been a world-class gaming and resort community, and truly, a transportation system like this makes us a world-class community where we can move goods and services and meet the needs of our community, so this is really an exciting project.
How does it feel to be responsible for the future of Southern Nevada?
Well, I hadn't really thought about it that way.
Couple of questions. Phase 1, you said 280 to 300 million, and Phase 1, Phase 3 is part of the RFP?
Correct.
And what's the cost of, estimated cost of Phase 3?
It's, the estimated cost of Phase 3, given those components, it's right around $200 million. The total package that we're looking at is right around $500 million, but really, that's what we're going to be doing with this RFP, is actually developing what we think that's going to look like. You know, we may be able to pull in added benefit from a ramp that we had anticipated putting into another phase. Those are the types of things that we'll be looking at here in the future, and we'll really be looking at, one, what the department can afford, as, you know, an availability payment, and two, what would most benefit the community and the interstate and US-95 there.
And how many phases are part of Project Neon?
We actually have six phases now. To briefly go through them, Phase 1 is mostly the connection of the HOV system, along with reconnecting the local access. Phase 2 is going to be re-establishing Martin Luther King Boulevard to Oki. Phase 3 is the Charleston interchange and basically realigning the I-15. Phase 4 is going to be southbound ramp rating, and ramp rating is often confusing when you just mention it to people, but really, what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep the oncoming traffic from having to merge into the off, or into the traffic, trying to get off the freeway, and so you take either the oncoming traffic up and over the off-going traffic, and so it eliminates a lot of that weaving that's causing the problems through that stretch of road. And then Phase 5 is going to be the northbound ramp rating portion of that, so we'll be braiding from Sahara, clear up through the US-95 interchange.
Phase 6?
And Phase 6, sorry, is the UPR grade separation of Wyoming Avenue.
Okay, and the additional costs of 2, 4, 5, and 6?
Right now, the, right now, our estimated cost for the total project is between $1 billion and about $1.5 billion, with the changes that we've made.
And the, one of the biggest bottlenecks is coming from the west on the 95, squeezing down to two lanes coming underneath I-15. Is that component a part of Project Neon at all?
That component of the project is not part of the project. You're talking about directly under the I-15. No, unfortunately, we're not, our project limits don't include that.
The, and I appreciate the update. To me, I don't know if the other board members feel differently, but this private-public partnership is a no-brainer. If we don't...
feel differently, but this private-public partnership is a no-brainer. If we don't find a different way to fund our transportation, the RTC board in 15 years is going to have this same presentation about what's the status of Project NEON. So I would certainly encourage board members to deal with their own councils and try to garner the support. Rudy, I think it's creative, it's innovative, and I think it's the way of the future. This is the only way we're going to even attempt to catch up on all the billions of dollars of projects that are still out there. So I commend NDOT for this initiative and anything we can do to support it. We certainly appreciate your presentation. Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. Just trying to ponder this, public-private. What is in it for the private sector, then?
The way that I understand it, it's a stable investment forum. Basically, we pay them back with a rate of return.
They know that the government's going to pay them at a purpose.
Yes, exactly. And we'd be paying them back with either state or federal funding. It's a good investment forum. If they partner with a construction company, then they can benefit from the efficiencies of the design-build process as well as the maintenance and operation portion of things. We're looking at whether or not we want to include that as part of the project. But, you know, those are things that we'll find out.
So you don't even need to anticipate a tolling piece, because that had been debated one time, to do that on a stretch?
Correct. All it is, all we're looking at is a financial vehicle here. It's a mortgage on a house, essentially.
But that gets a longer term, which you're not prohibited on, because I know you're right. Normally, it's 20-year or 30. I think only 20 on our projects. Some go up to 30. So this would be a permitted and-
Yeah. And as I'd mentioned earlier, it's, you know, when we typically bond a project, you end up having to have all the funding upfront. And so you're immediately paying payments on those while it's under construction. However, under this scenario, we don't pay until it's made available to the public.
But they know they can count on it, and then it brings jobs and everything else and some stability. Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman?
I just got a couple of, I don't know how to phrase this or ask the question, but a couple of concerns, but yet I understand the project and the need of it. But where, I guess it's a, I've heard Chris say, philosophically, where do we stop increasing freeways to move traffic and support bus systems and get people out of their cars into buses and stop creating, building wider and wider and wider freeways and freeways on top of freeways? And when, is there some magic number where that stops and we start balance, the balance act, I guess, is what?
That's, that's a great question. And typically, when we get into the environmental process, we're required to look at a number of alternatives. And the no-build alternative, of course, is part of that. One thing that I like to point out with this project is that we're not adding a general-purpose lane to the system. Through the whole thing, it doesn't add a single general-purpose lane. What we're doing is we're connecting that HOV system. That HOV system is going to be available for transit for buses. We're creating that interchange there at Western Avenue, which is going to allow those vehicles that are in the HOV system to exit onto the local streets directly rather than getting tangled up in the weaving, merging movements. The ramp rating, those are all things that kind of help alleviate the congestion and make things safer for drivers through that stretch of road. But really, we're not adding capacity. We're not adding a general-purpose lane.
So there is a safety net, per se, that where we stop doing this and start focusing on getting people out of their cars, or?
Correct.
I mean, because if you look at a billion dollars in a transit system, my goodness, we could put buses in the air.
Well, and like I said, with the, with the NEPA process, you know, with the no-build alternative, typically, we investigate other options and other alternatives to-
Councilman, let me add, if we wanted a sneak preview to answer your question, take a look at the northwest. What NDOT has done with the expansion in the 95, now all the way out past Ann Road, the RTC's introduction of the two park-and-rides, when you have the appropriate infrastructure, the roadway infrastructure in place, that gives you an immediate opportunity to add the bus component and the park-and-ride. But they have to run in parallel, because if we don't have the infrastructure for HOV lanes, then it becomes ineffective. It has to be an efficient and effective choice for someone to get on the bus. But Councilman Ross mentioned it earlier. You drive by either of those park-and-rides on any day, and a lot of people are taking advantage of it because of the infrastructure that's been done in the northwest.
And that's, and that's the good, good part of it. I mean, that's the part I try to get to, is where do we draw that line? Because there's still a whole bunch of people that go to one place and park their car and get out and go to work, and they could be on a bus. And so if we continue to make it convenient, I understand Project NEON needs to be done. I mean, I was born and raised here. I've seen how the city's grown. And some of those things need to be done, absolutely. I do not disagree. But where do we stop making those commuters, making it convenient for them not to get on a bus? I mean, it's a double-edged sword for us to sit here, because we hear both sides of that, and we hear the commuter saying it's congested, and then we hear the bus riders saying that we ain't got enough routes. I mean, there's a balancing act that we have to watch and be careful of and make sure that they're keeping both happy.
I don't disagree. And I think that's where we turn to you and your leadership in guiding us and developing our priorities. And I think one of the things that we can do regularly is remind you the cost of mile-per-roadway infrastructure versus cost of mile-per-bus rapid transit, or even light rail alternatives.
There you go.
I think just off the cuff. So it's a $1.5 billion project in comparison. A light rail would be about $100 million a mile, so you can do the math there. A BRT system is about $20 million per mile. So certainly, it is, it's a balancing act. We need the infrastructure for, to support those other modes of transportation. But we also do need to give consideration to moving mass, amounts of people efficiently, so.
It's just because interesting, because my work, I get to interact with a lot of people that have came here, moved here from the east, and they didn't own cars because their system, their bus system was so well-done that they didn't need a car. And I guess I have that dream, I guess, of getting our bus system to where we want to get on the bus and ride it, instead of getting in our car and going somewhere.
One of the neat things about our community is we are kind of reaching critical mass, too, now that we're at a population of over 2 million. And we actually are one of the densest cities in terms of residential densities in the United States. So we're just now reaching that tipping point where major investment in more mass transportation is going to become something that our community is interested in and that we hopefully will be able to get funding for.
Councilman Ross, and then Councilwoman March.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, Cole, you mentioned Phase One, tying all the HOV lanes. And I think this is going to be a much larger discussion for down the road. I personally don't believe those HOV lanes are being utilized to any kind of measurable capacity. In fact, what I see every day when I drive US-95 is single drivers in the HOV lanes. And it's quite frustrating to those of us that obey the law. And I know enforcement's always an issue. It's an issue with the Highway Patrol, and it's an issue with Metropolitan Police Department. There are only so many men and women out there trying to enforce, you know, the laws. I think the state could certainly generate one heck of a ton of revenue if they just patrol our HOV lanes. But that's going to be required to be a larger discussion down the road here, because how do we, how do we fully utilize those HOV lanes? I mean, we're going to, NDOT's going to spend a whole ton of money to, in the first phase, to tie all these HOV lanes together and make it all nice and smooth and operative. But how do we encourage more people to carpool? Because that's the, that's the idea here. Carpool, and the Councilman Eliasen's thoughts, you know, philosophically, yeah, we want more people to carpool. We want more people to ride their bikes, like Mr. Swallow demonstrates on a regular basis. We want more people to use our public transportation system, because it's a great transportation system. But those HOV lanes, in my mind, they're not doing what they need to be doing today. And how do we get there, Director? How do we get there, General Manager? How do we get there? And Commissioner, you mentioned toll lanes. You know, I'm certainly, we can certainly expand the thought process in regards to those, to prospective toll lanes down the road, but that would take legislative process. But we've got to encourage more people to use those. And if we can generate revenue from those lanes that are being underutilized today, I think that's, that's something that needs to be discussed down the road.
Thank you. Good points. And Commissioner Eliasen, your remarks are well-taken. You know, we are the MPO for Southern Nevada, and really, we are trying to grow a good, solid transit system. And part of growing that transit system is that we have to be able to get folks fairly quickly to where they need to go. And so it's that, finding that right marriage of how we move folks through the community quickly and create a system, much like we are doing on the Boulder Highway and on Sahara right now, with creating lanes and efficiencies. I think that's something that has to happen in the, in the Project NEON area as well. But I think that it's exciting to see, and I think striking that balance to ensure that we're growing a solid transit system needs to be an important priority.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we could, then we'll have Jenica Finerty, the project manager for F Street, give her a briefing. I do emphasize briefing.
What did you say? I didn't miss that. Good morning. Thank you for inviting me to present on the I-15 at F Street. Project, the project consists of reopening F Street underneath I-15, as Director Malphabon had mentioned. I'm just going to quickly go over our anticipated construction sequencing, what the project's all about, and the funding. This project, or this slide shows the picture of what it looks like today. You can see what it looked like before, the design-build project in the upper-left-hand corner. And the lower-right is the vantage point of standing on F Street looking toward the, excuse me, I-15. This is a picture looking the other way. You can see the cul-de-sac road there at the end of I-15. The project consists of building three bridges, one big bridge on the main line 15, a bridge for the on-ramp, and then also one for the 95-515 connector. The project has a significant aesthetic element to it. We worked very tirelessly with the community to learn from them what they wanted this project to look like when construction was over and done with. And the theme that they, that was selected, the preferred theme, was one along the historic, history. So the project contains a lot of elements regarding people, places, and events that the community wanted represented as part of this project. You can see the tower on the left-hand side is representative of the Moulin Rouge Casino that was there in the past. Inside the, underneath the structure, there'll be interpretive panels representing, again, the images, people, places, things, and events that were important. Kind of get a sense of what that looks like there. In terms of the construction sequencing, it consists, there are three significant phases that will impact I-15. The design team anticipates the construction moving from the south to the north. So northbound traffic would be shifted over to the southbound lanes. I-15 would be reduced to two lanes in each direction for a period of three months. That's assuming multiple shifts and six-day work weeks. The next, then, traffic then is flipped over onto the new bridge while we construct the southbound side. Then, once that's done, all lanes on I-15 are restored, three lanes in each direction while we work on the last two structures. During that time, the southbound on-ramp at D Street will be closed for approximately five months. We anticipate bids to come in between 11 and 1/2 and 13 and 1/2 million, approx, or we've got $16 million of funding identified through city, state, and federal funds. And our anticipated schedule, as Director Malphabon indicated, the Las Vegas City Council did approve the agreement last week. We will be advertising the project the first of the year. It'll be advertised for six weeks. And then construction is approximately 17 to 18 months, again, with compressed and strict milestones on the work that reduces the lanes on I-15. We do have, we've partnered with City of Las Vegas. They've been a significant player in this project. The two of us have worked together to develop this project. There's a website and some social media that we've used as well.
Thank you. Questions, Councilwoman?
Just to add, I wanted to just make the point that this project really transformed how the department, and I think other public works agencies, do their outreach effort. As Jenica mentioned, we're using a lot more social media, but just the involvement with the public has been, has raised the bar to a higher level. One thing that I liked was that the City of Las Vegas' consultant, Atkins, had used a new process where the representatives from the community at the public meeting could actually vote, and you could see real-time what their preferences were on some of the aesthetics or some of the major elements of the project. So we're doing a lot more, I think, better outreach, and Jenica's done a great job as, and Cole also, on Project NEON, at doing a better job of outreach on our major projects.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
How much extra cost is involved in the amenities as far as the west side, historic west side, and the other things that you're having along that line?
I don't have a specific dollar amount for you. Typically, our aesthetic policy is to have up to 3%. And in this case, it's a little bit more than 3%. We've got landscaping and irrigation along F Street.
I'm talking about the showing of the Moulin Rouge.
Correct.
And I'm talking about the marking of that and everything. My concern is that we know that this money we're talking about, and I voted to do it, so I felt it was a thing to do. But my concern is, instead of keeping the budget down because of the amount of extra, we're getting up to $16 million, we did it, we didn't do it as cost-worthy as we might have been able to do it. I, I mean, I appreciate all the effort, and I appreciate how nice it looks, and I appreciate all of that. But I'm just wondering, this is additional money we're giving to a project that we had done before, which was messed up somehow. And I'm glad that we're doing the project. But I just would like to have, if I could, a breakdown of all the monies that are involved. And for example, that 3%, is it always there? Is the 3% always there? And what we're doing, we've had to fight really hard sometimes to get some of the landscaping and other stuff done in other areas. So I would like to ask, first of all, if I could have a hard copy of your report, and I'd like a hard copy of the previous report also, and I'd like a good breakdown of where the monies are going for the different aspects of it. To open up the F Street was extremely important, but it took an $8 million, $16 million difference there with two groups working together. And I just want to make sure that fiscally, we followed that way. And it is gorgeous. You did a good job. I'm not criticizing that. I'm just concerned about some of the fiscal responsibility I have had and some of the votes I've made.
I'd be happy to provide that breakdown to you through Director Malphabon.
Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. This has been contentious, as everybody knows. I do believe that the F Street was redlined, and I have no, make no bones about saying that. I don't think it was NDOT that did it, though. I think you were directed in design to change some things, and I think part of it tied back to city redevelopment. But be that as it may, it's the right public policy to be done right now. And I commend the City Council for their vote last week with regard to the funding that had been committed. I think it makes sense to invest in our community, including the public visual art component that you're doing. I don't think this is any different than what NDOT has been doing over the last two years. If you drive any place in our valley with the new landscaping, the phenomenal pieces you're doing out on 95, it's just, I just delight every time I drive out there, because I want to see how they place those rocks, because it all has to be leveled correctly to get that built up. But anyway, that's for a whole nother day. But I think if this is a little bit more than the 3%, I think the Councilwoman's correct. We need to know what that is. But I don't think it's unusual any longer. I think we're actually looking at public infrastructure for the long term. Cities are judged by their architecture. They're judged by their landscape architecture. They're judged by all that cultural part of it, as well as moving people in a safe and effective manner. And so I think the west side, I think the east side, we need more of that type of, we don't have that much construction going on in our areas more often than not. But I think if it's a little bit more percentage in that piece, it'll be interesting to see. But I don't think it's unusual and that there was anybody asking really for anything more. And you really do have an opportunity to showcase that the west side is part of our community. When I first moved here, 35, 36 years ago, I taught school at Jim Bridger. And while it wasn't in the west side, my kids, my students, many of them lived on the west side. And it was pretty racist still back in that day. And I think that this will help rebuild and reflect and say that we've come a long way. And so I think in the long run that this is going to be, this is needed. Unfortunately, it shouldn't have happened this way, but it is what it is, as they say. Do you have to take out any bridges right now, then, with the new design?
No.
Okay. So you don't have any new bridges that have to come in. Okay, so you don't have any new bridges that have to come in? In what you're going to provide to the councilwoman, in the reconfiguration, you'll still have an ingress and egress?
Correct. Traffic will go north and south on F Street, along with bikes, and got a great sidewalk plan as well.
Sidewalk plan, okay. And then, so we're really not tearing down anything else that had been done? It can complement what your original design was? Is that accurate to say? Or if not, tell me. I mean...
It provides the connection that was there once before.
Okay, so that was amazing.
We're leaving it a little bit better than it was before, in my opinion, with the aesthetic components and the sidewalks.
Okay.
The trees and the lighting along F Street as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselwoman.
I might say that, you know, the city has worked very hard on the west side, and I think the development that we've seen there and some of the beauty of the streets on Martin Luther King, I just have many people who question me about sometimes the spending of the monies. And I've had a question about that Martin Luther King area. I want to be able to answer it correctly.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, are you done with your report?
Yes, I am.
Appreciate it. Ms. Quigley.
Mr. Chairman, your next item is item number four, to conduct a comment period for citizens' participation.
If you wish to speak during the public comment period, please fill out a public comment card. Our first public comment period is limited to items that are on today's agenda only. I do have one card. I have Mr. Mendoza, and you're speaking on the agenda itself, per NRS and...
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you are aware, that on September, you advised us what we needed to do to get on the agenda before the Commissioners so we could be heard. We did make two requests, one letter dated October 25th and one dated November the 25th. We have been advised that under the OML Section 8.05, we were denied that. So in order for us to continue this process and file a complaint with the Attorney General, we just wanted to take a position that on our November 25th letter, we were asking the Commissioners to be heard based on the RFP that was put out by the staff of the RTC. And based on that letter, we just want to take the position that on the allegations that we made, which fall under misconduct, impropriety, conflict of interest, or possible unethical practice by some Commissioners. So that being said, we're just taking the process, and we were asking the Commissioners to hear us out, but again, under the OML 8.05, that was, we were told that we couldn't be heard. So we'll leave it up to the Commissioners to make a decision, so we could go ahead and move forward to a complaint with the Attorney General in regards to our rights to be heard before the public body in a public forum.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on a specific agenda?
Mr. Farlow.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. There's some agenda items concerning the bike trails. I'll hold for public comment at the end of the end.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next items constitute your consent agenda. Those are items five through 36, and may be taken in one motion.
I would, there's a motion on the floor, but I would ask that that motion include pulling item number 22. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number 22 is that the Regional Transportation Commission authorize the appraisal and the solicitation of proposals for lease, lease with option to purchase, or purchase of RTC-owned real property known as Assessor's Parcels Number 139-34-302-006 and APN Number 139-33-801-8019, located in the area south of Bonneville Avenue and west of Main Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, along the Union Pacific Railroad. It's items for possible action. Background on this is, in July and October of 2005, the RTC purchased approximately 6.5 acres of real property located in the area south of Bonneville Avenue and west of Main Street from the UPRR for the development of a possible future transit center. Since that time, the RTC constructed and opened a new transit center nearby, known as the Bonneville Transit Center, at Bonneville and Casino Center Boulevard, because that location was more conducive to ingress and egress of transit vehicles. All RTC departments were previously surveyed, and it was determined that there is no immediate use for these unused parcels. On August 12th of 2010, these two parcels were declared as surplus.
Thank you. To the board members, I ask that this be pulled, because my comment and/or concern was, I personally would like to see the document, the RFP, and in particular, making sure there's language in there that protects the RTC and the asset. A scenario, if someone comes in and bids, the market being depressed as it is now, is there language in there that there are timelines or timeframes that something has to be developed? I don't want to see our asset purchased at a bargain price and sat on for 10 years and then flipped to something differently. So unless there's a pressing time need in front of us, I'd like to see this come back with the documentation attached, if that's possible. And the second point, just in making sure that the RTC is in close communication with the City of Las Vegas, Councilman Ross, Councilwoman Tarkanian, to make sure that their overall downtown planning, they're aware of this, that they can perhaps get involved in encouraging the right type of development in that area. I would look to the attorneys for affirmation or condemnation.[1023.04][1023.04](Laughter).
Those are appropriate conditions.
Yeah, my motion would be to hold this until the January RTC meeting, and with the appropriate backup attached, and especially making sure that we protect the RTC's asset.
Commissioner, I'm Sharon Hout, and I'm the Purchasing Manager here at the RTC, and your comments are appropriate, and we will include those in the RFP, and we'd be happy to bring the RFP back for your review.
Thank you. And please work with counsel as far as the appropriate language that needs to be included in that. So the motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That ends your consent, or that brings us to our Metropolitan Planning Organization, part of the agenda, and Dr. Fred O'Haney will introduce items 37, 38, and 39.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to take items 37, 38, and 39 together, since they are all related.
Please.
All right. Item 37 is to approve and adopt the 2013 to 2035 Regional Transportation Plan. Item 38 is to approve and adopt the 2013 to 2016 Transportation Improvement Plan. And item 39 is to approve and adopt the 2013 Transit Program of Projects. Mr. Chairman, the RTC adopted the current Regional Transportation Plan on November 13th, 2008, and is set to expire in March of 2013. Federal regulations require that we update the plan at least every four years. Approval of this plan will allow us to secure federal authorization to fund identified projects. I'd like to know that these plans were published and advertised for public comment, and we've had extensive public outreach to solicit public comments as well. The plan has been approved by advisory committees, and we're seeking the board's approval today. Mr. Raymond Hest, RTC's Planning Manager, is here to give a brief overview of the plan and program.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. As Dr. Fred O'Haney mentioned, I'm here to present the 2013 through 2035 Regional Transportation Plan, the 2013 through 2016 Transportation Improvement Program, and the 2013 Transit Program of Projects. As was mentioned, the RTC must produce these documents in our capacity as the Metropolitan Planning Organization serving the Las Vegas urbanized area. Federal regulations require that the RTC produce the Regional Transportation Plan at least every four years. The current version of the document was adopted in November of 2008 and will expire in March 2013. The RTP, or the Regional Transportation Plan, I might use the acronym RTP, and I apologize if I use that too much. It must show how federal surface transportation funding will be spent within Clark County over the next 20 years. In addition to that, we must show all regionally significant projects, regardless of the funding source. And the term regionally significant is a federally defined term that pretty much means any project that is going to be located on a roadway with a road classification of principal arterial or greater. Examples of such roads include Interstate 15, US 95, the Clark County 215 Beltway, and Sahara Avenue. The first four years of the RTP comprise what is known as the Transportation Improvement Program. Projects identified in the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, may receive federal funding and may proceed with implementation. Projects in the outer year of the Regional Transportation Plan, so beyond that first four years, from years 2017 and beyond, are a little bit more fluid in nature. It's sometimes hard to know exactly what their schedule is, what their funding source is, but those first four years are hopefully closer to implementation. Also included as part of the Regional Transportation Plan is the Transit Program of Projects. This, too, is a federally mandated document and shows how projects will be funded in fiscal year 2013 using federal Transit 5307 funds. I'd like to quickly review our update strategy. First of all, staff considers this an update to the current Regional Transportation Plan as opposed to a complete rewrite. RTC staff felt this approach was necessary for the following three reasons. First, as I mentioned earlier, the current plan expires in March 2013, and we didn't feel that we had sufficient time in order to do a complete rewrite throughout the existing document and start from scratch. Secondly, the existing RTC, or RTP, seems to have served the region fairly well, and we have not received explicit demand for a completely new document. And then lastly, as many of you know, there was new transportation legislation known as Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century, or MAP 21, that was passed by Congress this summer, took effect October 1st, and that will have implications on the Regional Transportation Plan in a number of ways. First of all, it's anticipated that it's going to affect some of our funding projections, as well as some new federal requirements related to project prioritization and performance measures. However, Federal Highway Administration and Federal Trans Administration are still working on the guidance for that legislation, so we don't know exactly how to comply fully with the new legislation just yet. So in the interim, we felt it was appropriate to move forward with the RTP in its current state. I also want to highlight that RTC staff conducted extensive coordination with partner agencies, as well as significant outreach on these documents. We worked very closely with local, state, and federal partners to both identify projects as well as funding sources, and we also kept the subcommittees of the Regional Transportation Commission regularly informed of the update of the documents. As for public outreach, the RTC conducted an online survey to gauge public interest in the existing goals of the Regional Transportation Plan. This was followed by 15 public outreach meetings and one public hearing. These were held at city council meetings of some of our smaller jurisdictions, they were held at the town advisory boards throughout Clark County, as well as public points of interest such as libraries and community activity centers. Now to give you a quick overview of where the funding comes from that's identified in the plan. It is important to understand that the Regional Transportation Plan identifies a multitude of funding sources. Some of those funding sources, the Regional Transportation Commission has control over, others we do not. Examples of funding sources beyond our control include funds that are controlled by local entities, private developers, or the state. However, the RTC does have control over some funding sources. On the federal side, so that 37% slice of the pie, that includes Surface Transportation Program Funds, or STP. These funds are typically used for roadway expansion projects and can be used for sidewalks and other surface transportation, and the RTC expects to get about $23 million annually in this funding source over the next 20 years. And then another source of funding is congestion mitigation and air quality funds, also known as CMAC. The RTC expects to get about $16.5 million annually in CMAC funds. And CMAC is typically used for projects to address congestion or projects which are aimed at improving air quality, such as bicycle pedestrian projects, transit projects, and the like. As you know, the RTC also controls several local funding sources as well. These include the Transportation Tax Referendum revenues, known as Question 10, as well as motor vehicle fuel taxes. However, I want to remind you that since this is considered a local funding source, a project funded by these sources may not necessarily be in the Regional Transportation Plan unless it is on a regionally significant facility. It bears mentioning that this draft of the Regional Transportation Plan is more fiscally conservative than past iterations. For example, the current version of the document identifies over $13 billion worth of improvements over the 20-year period. However, this draft of the RTP we present to you today identifies under $9 billion worth of projects over the same time period, which marks about a 30% decrease overall. We felt this was warranted because of the uncertainty of future funding, as well as the slowdown of economic growth in the valley. Of the nearly $9 billion worth of transportation investment identified in the plan, $5.9 billion, or nearly 70%, will be invested in projects to improve streets and highways. $1.6 billion, or 19%, will be invested in transit capital projects. $309 million, or nearly 4%, will be invested in bicycle pedestrian projects, as well as projects to improve the environment. And lastly, $661 million, or 8%, will be invested in operational improvements, intelligent transportation systems, and safety projects. And again, I want to reiterate the point that we worked closely in the identification of those projects with all of the project sponsors, local entities, and state and federal partners. Just to highlight a few things from each of those categories of funding. On the streets and highway side, we just had a presentation about Project Neon. That project is identified in the plan. We also have identified Clark County's Beltway projects. Interesting note here is that much of that project is going to be locally funded, but because it's a regionally significant project, we do have to show it in our plan. We show about $575 million worth of investment in the Beltway project. For the City of Las Vegas, an example project includes the Martin Luther King Boulevard and industrial road connections, which total about $123 million, and this project is also aligned with Project Neon. The City of Henderson has a project to add an interchange at I-15 and Star Avenue, which totals $77 million. North Las Vegas' North Fifth Street project is included in the plan at the price tag of about $60 million. There's a Mesquite interchange project at I-15 and Milepost 118, which totals about $20 million. And as many of you know, the Boulder City Bypass is included in the plan as well, which totals $2 billion for the planning and preliminary engineering phase of that project.
I've got a question. Tina? You fired my colleague down here. I was just wondering if I could move the North Fifth and take their money.[1693.26][1693.26](Laughter).
On the transit side of the program, it bears mentioning that the lion's share of transit projects are for fleet replacement. Fleet replacement totals about $1 billion over the 20-year span of the plan, but we have identified a few improved transit services. This includes planning-level study for Maryland Parkway, design for Flamingo Road, and improved service along South Las Vegas Boulevard. Operational improvements projects identified in the plan include extension of dynamic message board signs, ramp metering, closed-circuit television, and flow detectors along I-15 from Craig to Apex. This is known as Fast Package B and totals about $110 million. We also have numerous signal upgrades. Many of these are funded through the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Project Program. They include Boulder Highway at Magic Way for the City of Henderson, Clark County's intersection improvement at Tropicana and Swenson, as well as the City of North Las Vegas' intersection improvement at Cheyenne and Martin Luther King Boulevard. There's also a project for City of Las Vegas for Buffalo Drive from Charleston Boulevard to Sahara Avenue. Oops. I mean, my clicker went dead.[1779.76][1779.76](Laughter). to Sahara Avenue. I mean, my clicker went dead. Actually, if we can go one more, since I just covered that one. Lastly, examples of bicycle and pedestrian projects, as well as those to address congestion, include purchase of electric vehicles for Boulder City at $1.2 million. The City of Henderson's Boulder Highway Trail at $650,000. Main Street and Commerce Street Complete Streets retrofit at $22 million. Landscape enhancement at I-15 and Exit 120 at $420,000. And bike lanes on State Road 157, Kyle Canyon, for approximately 17 miles, at a cost of about $12 million. Okay, bad time I went through. Included in the backup is a list of comments received during the public comment period, as well as the RTC's response to those comments. The list indicates which documents would be changed as a result of the comments received, if any of them would be. Additionally, there is support in your, or some of the support material in your packet includes some extensive documentation of our public outreach efforts. Both of these documents are expected to be incorporated into Appendix 2 of the Regional Transportation Plan. I'd like to note that the Regional Transportation Plan, the Transportation Improvement Program, and the Transit Program of Projects were presented to the Metropolitan Planning Subcommittee on November 13th, to the Transportation Access Advisory Committee on November 28th, and to the Executive Advisory Committee on the following day, on November 29th. All of these committees recommended to the Board a, recommended positively, adoption and approval of all three of these documents, and staff seeks the same from you today.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Jun Kiliani, then Councilwoman March.
Thank you. And the Flamingo design, is that in anticipation of the potential stadium that will be located at, on the Flamingo side now, because originally it was back on the Tropicana side, so they've kind of moved that forward? And I would think that we'd want to make sure that we were somewhat planning for that part.
Yes. The design right now would accommodate the future stadium location. However, we don't have funding for construction at this time, and future date would, once we get funding, would...
Perhaps if that moves through the legislation, because they have to do a TIF, I think, in order to be able to do something along those lines, we should be having a conversation with legislators about including the road alignment for Swenson possibly, as well as some of the design components. And I want to thank David Swallow for coming to our Town Hall meeting, did a great job. We have the two Davids there, David Swallow and David Frimer from UNLV, and they did a very good job with the businesses in that community, so thank you for that. The Mount Charleston Bike Lanes, where are the 17 miles? Are they starting from Lower Kyle and then up? Is that what you're looking at, I would think?
Pardon me, for just a moment, I'll get to the exact...
It's much needed. I'm assuming you have the right-of-way. Is that what you're going to do, is you're going to widen the roads from NDOT's perspective so that we have the bike lanes? That actually had been recommended, I think, by Senator Nick Horn back in the 90s, but there was never any financing for it. But it is dangerous, especially, you can't even do the 3-feet compliance half the time when you've got racers up there training and some things along those lines, so I think that's much, much needed.
The project limits identify Middle Canyon Complex to US 95 as the boundaries.
Oh, so by Harris, kind of, then? Larry, do you...
Past Harris Springs.
Past Harris Springs, okay. So that gets about halfway, so at least prior to that curve. That'll be better for folks, though, in the long run. Okay.
And it looks like there are two phases identified in the RTP in fiscal year 2013. There's about $2.7 million identified, which may include some right-of-way acquisition, and then implementation of the project at about $8.6 million in 2014.
Okay, and I just want to thank Commissioner Brown, because this is his district, but I do have a residence up there, and so he tolerates me from time to time on some of this. And I do want to thank him and NDOT. I think there's going to be a meeting at the TAB in January about the SALT issue, so thank you for participating in that part while we have that discussion with the community. Thank you.
On your slide where you discuss the sources of funds, and we have 31% in state bonded money, and then another 11% from other state funds, does this take into consideration what we heard this morning from NDOT, that some of those monies, or some of the money coming from NDOT may be limited in the future? Is that dialogue...
Well, in the development of the plan, we identified the project lists starting this summer and working up through, I mean, there were changes to some of the projects up until right last week, for the most part, we keep getting changes. So I know for certain projects, there are things that are always in transition and moving, so the information we have, we believe to be the most up-to-date as possible, but I wouldn't be surprised if certain projects change, either in terms of their identified funding source, or how much is going towards a certain project. And typically, when we develop the document, we have the local entities. If it's funding that's beyond our control, we just pretty much rely on the project sponsor to identify what those funding sources are. So if the state has identified state bonded funds for Project Neon, for example, or whatever the case may be, we'll identify those in our fund source balance sheet, but then we'll also identify it in the project specific. So if those project numbers do change in the future, it won't be problematic for us to make those changes in the Transportation Improvement Program or the Regional Transportation Plan. We can always amend these documents at a future date.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have three items before us that can be handled in one motion. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, that brings us to our Administration and Finance portion of the agenda, and Items 40 and 41 will be coordinated through Sandy Stanko.
...structure of the solicitation per the Alternative Transportation Services and direct staff accordingly. Authorizations of the solicitation and authorize staff to negotiate contracts. Glenn Levitt, the project manager for this project, has a brief presentation and will be happy to answer any questions afterwards. This item also went to the Transportation Advisory Committee on November 28th and received support.
Thank you, Commissioners. The Alternative Transportation Services, RFP, which is essentially an exploratory process to determine community interest in a new model of providing paratransit service to ADA-eligible persons attending job day training programs, and to evaluate this model as a cost-savings endeavor. As we're discussing the format, it's important to know that, or to remember that the RTC will not award any contracts if significant cost savings are not demonstrated. Currently, the RTC specialized services provides, provides service in four ways. The core paratransit contract, which is currently operated by First Transit. The core contractor also provides a separate senior transportation service for the RTC, known as Fleximal Demand Response and Silver Star. The third is the Coordinated Transportation Network, which includes our Veterans Medical Transportation Network. And the fourth is the current supplemental provider transportation services that we operate through various supplemental providers. In 2008, the RTC began using Job Access Reverse Commute, or JARC, and new Freedom Grants to help develop a coordinated transportation network to provide additional services to customers who would be eligible for ADA paratransit service through nonprofit organizations. In 2010, due to the changes in Medicaid, RTC developed supplemental service agreements with adult daycare providers, allowing them to continue their existing transportation programs and keeping them, in keeping what would be ADA-eligible riders off the current ADA system. These firms brought their own resources, which expanded the overall capacity of ADA. The figures before you are, first, the red one here, the 3289, is the core service contract. We always talk about kind of a bigger number than that, but this slide shows the 3289 does not include the fuel and the RTC administrative costs associated with transporting under the core contract. The yellow, the yellow line here, the 1565, however, what does include is all-inclusive. It would include the service, the fuel, and the RTC administrative costs. So you can see a dramatic difference between what the supplemental providers would be able to, to transport versus the core contract currently. The difference in cost in most communities is primary that paratransit service is a demand service, which can be costly, and our supplemental providers are more, more of a dedicated subscription service, meaning that they can, they can transport more people at a time. As shown here, the demand, the man response is costly, but due to a local nonprofit, or nonprofit providers, usually they have less overhead, so this will nail them to provide services at lower cost per trip. So what we've learned through the, this process, that, is that the service would provide some distinct benefits. First, supplemental providers can reduce our blended per-trip rate, which would be the last slides, what we see is the, the combination between the two of the last slides, that people that would participate, the ADA paratransit clients that would participate, or that are currently participating in supplemental providers versus the ones that are, that are currently in the core paratransit contract. Now, that blended trip rate, we've estimated to be about $30 in 2012. Secondly, supplemental providers have a, another benefit is that supplemental providers have a closer relationship with their clientele and understand their needs. Both the residential facilities and the job day training providers are professionally trained to detect certain triggers in dealing with behavior, and we feel like they're the best fit for providing this, this unique service. In looking for other targeted groups, we've been fortunate to develop working relationship with the Desert Regional Center and the Southern Nevada area providers, respectively known as DRC and SNAP. SNAP is made up of group home providers who have created supportive living environments for persons with developmental disabilities, and job day training organizations who provide work opportunities. DRC is the Oversight Committee and funding arm of the state for these programs. We've seen, we've seen that transportation is critical to the success of these providers' programs, and we feel it's the next logical area for the RTC to develop agreements similar to those existing with our current adult daycare models. Currently, most of the transportation provided by the RTC through Catstar, our Catstar service is to job day training sites and residential care facilities. These individuals would also receive, they also receive state aid through, through DRC. RTC is currently working with DRC on an inter-local agreement related to funding, and Leslie Brown, the Community Services Director for DRC, is here today in support of the procurement and has some brief comments.
Hi, good morning. I'm Leslie Brown, Community Services Director at Desert Regional Center. We have been working with RTC on this project and feel it helps us meet our mission of promoting independence, self-direction and choice for individuals in the community with intellectual disabilities, and to support individuals with maintaining residence and life in the home and the community rather than institutional settings as we have in the past. We have a number of contracted providers of jobs and day training programs and supported living services that are very much more equipped and trained and qualified to interact and assist people with the special needs that they have, whether it be behavioral, medical, mental health issues, that can participate in the planning and actual delivery of this transportation model for individuals by offering also someone that they are familiar with and that know them to get them to their destinations every day. It would offer an opportunity for self-direction and a little bit more independence and control in the home setting of the transportation that the individuals receive. So we are very much in support of this option and choice for individuals.
Thank you. And Leslie, did you state your name for the record?
Sure. Leslie Brown.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, we appreciate Leslie and all the help she's given us through this process. It's been a, it's been a great, a great help to us. Our goal is to set up a procurement process that will, will allow RTC to determine the feasibility and interest in an alternative transportation program, wherein providers of services to developmentally challenged individuals will directly deliver service to their clients with, with the coordinated effort of the RTC. On average, we transport up to about 1,000 passengers a day on, on our Catstar service, and some of this service under this described plan would be transferred, would be transferred off of Catstar. However, we will continue to, we will continue with our Catstar service because some of those passengers remain at home with their families or are, are in independent living settings, but we feel that any roads to this service can benefit in reducing costs. Our vision is that the Alternative Transportation Services contract will be added to our existing service model through this RFP. We propose to offer a service model that takes into account what we have heard from all of our community partners by providing multiple options. Option one would be a rate developed where they use their own vehicles, so that would be rate, option one. Option two would be a rate developed where they use current vehicles that they're, that they're leasing at the, at this time. Option three would be a rate where the RTC would provide a minivan, or in some cases, a cutaway if needed. And option four would just be a mixture of all three, as, as tailored to their needs. Based on our discussion with, with these potential partners, they are most comfortable with starting with a two-year agreement with three one-year options. Per the evaluation criteria, we'll focus on three issues. First, in our, in our consideration is, is the ability for this service to significantly reduce service provision costs, just as what has occurred in our adult daycare model. Secondly, it is also important for us to determine how much service will be removed from the ADA paratransit core service, and how their proposals will be impacted in the ADA service overall. Third would be the technical factors such as experience and service implementation plans, and that will compromise the remaining 45% of the criteria. A five-member evaluation team comprised of three internal members and two external members is the staff's recommendation. Upon, upon approval of the Commission today, the Alternative Transportation Services request for proposal is set to be issued on December 27th of this month, or of this year, sorry. A proposal conference will be held in January, and proposals will be due to the RTC on or before January 30th. A recommendation for award of contracts for proposals that meet the evaluation criteria with, where, with contract approvals in March. Service is expected to start around the 1st of April. The reason for this compressed timeline, it's, it's very quick, is to develop sufficient ridership data to know the impact that this new service mode will have on the core ADA paratransit contract that obviously is coming up in 2014. In summary, the ATS, or Alternative Transportation Service, Service Model, is an expansion of an already proven model in our community and is designed to reduce cost and improve service, and staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jun Kiliani.
Thank you. Just a couple on that. So we have about 1,000 users on the paratransit a day currently?
No, that's just our Catstar service.
That's just our Catstar, okay. And we're looking with Leslie, with the DRC, as well as anybody that has a SNAP card, or...
We are looking to offer to providers that are contracted with DRC. SNAP is actually a Southern Nevada Association of Providers, so there's no member...
No duplication, so it could be the same folks.
No, it'd be some of the same folks.
Okay. And then, do you provide training? Because I think that's part of what we'll get, is some of the complaints that we've had from some of the drivers is not really knowing always how to handle some of our folks, and so, in a, in a kind and gentle manner, not that they don't want to be. So do you all, through your programming, ever provide additional training just for paratransit drivers?
That's something that we can certainly develop, if, if it's asked and it's necessary. I think the, the benefit of this program would be the individuals that are actually driving the vehicles or manning the vehicles are already trained and meet the requirements. Desert Regional Center has a provider certification agreement with each of the SLA and the jobs and day training providers, which, which provide a requirement for training and certifications and things for anybody working in the homes or in management.
Or in management, okay.
Right, so that's what the benefit would be.
Okay. Down the road, I know that there'd been a query to Tina about some of the drivers wanting some training, and we couldn't find anybody that actually had any... some training, and we couldn't find anybody that actually had anything put together in the community, which might be just something for a benefit down the road.
Absolutely.
But I think it makes better sense if you can peel off a little bit and have them in their comfort level, but they're still being able to do their independence, then that might free up the paratransit to be able to do additional services, right? And Sandy's nodding her head.
Yep, that's the intent.
Okay, and, and then we might even be able to expand some of that ADA again? I don't know, I'll just throw that out there, but that might get us, we may be able to then cover, expand the coverage a little bit if we're able to do that. And I think this is a good example of where government can't and shouldn't do it all, and if you can rely on partners and nonprofits and that to do certain components of it, it makes good sense in the long run, so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? The staff's recommendation again is...
To approve the request to release this solicitation and to bring contracts back at your March twentieth.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number forty-one, receive a report on procurement considerations regarding the structured solicitation for vehicle repair and maintenance of RTC-owned special service vehicles and direct staff accordingly. Authorize the issuance of the solicitation and authorize staff to negotiate contract. Glenn also has this presentation, and afterwards we have you to answer any questions. This item also went to the TAC Advisory Committee meeting on November twenty-eighth and received support.
Commissioners, as we discussed last, in this, in the previous presentation, we have many supplemental providers who are often funded by New Freedom or Job Access Reverse Commute Grants and are instrumental in managing the demand of the required specialized services we provide. The supplemental providers are also key in providing services to our clients that might not otherwise be met. Not only do these providers transport the, the excess demand on the ADA certified paratransit core contract, but, but also provide services to those that are unable to qualify for certification, those who might reside outside of the ADA paratransit service area, as well as veterans throughout our community. The vehicle shown here is from Helping Hands of Las Vegas Valley, who are part of our coordinated transportation network. This supplemental provider provides, on an average, three hundred and thirty trips per month. Their average vehicle maintenance cost is approximately eight hundred and twenty dollars on any given month. With the reduction or alleviation of those maintenance costs, Helping Hands of Vegas Valley could provide approximately fifty more trips on any given month. Accordingly, your supplemental service provider, ITN, ITN Las Vegas Valley performs about eighteen hundred rides per month at a, at a maintenance cost of approximately thirty-six hundred dollars per month. This would enable ITN to perform on an average of about three hundred more trips per month. If we expand our view a little bit and look at the supplemental providers as a whole, we're looking at, oh, I gave you my numbers, sorry. Apologize. Supplementalized as a whole, we, we average about thirty-six hundred trips per month on an average maintenance, maintenance cost of fourteen thousand dollars per month. Here, the alleviation would allow the system to perform on an average of nine hundred and thirty more trips per month. A supplemental maintenance, maintenance contract would, a supplemental provider maintenance contract would enhance our ability to serve in three distinct ways. First, we, we could consolidate the cost for the supplemental providers and the RTC. One unknown when providing an estimate for funding for supplemental providers is the maintenance aspect. Because the vehicles are inconsistent and the cost for repairing them remains a difficult thing to calculate, the maintenance contract would reduce costs for the supplemental providers and add a, a uniformity to the cost to the RTC. Second, the, the consistency of maintenance service provided when maintaining and repairing supplemental provider-operated RTC-owned vehicles. We, we have a high interest in improving the quality of work performed on RTC vehicles, RTC-owned vehicles, and this process will allow the RTC to have control over the maintenance provided and, and greater oversight. Finally, increased, it increases our ability to perform more trips through the supplemental providers. Less money spent on repairing vehicles means more money available for their core function, which is performing trips. As I mentioned in the previous presentation, staff has designed a strategy to help increasing the demand of our specialized services clients in, in accordance with the Alternative Transportation Services portion, the supplemental provider maintenance contract would also add stability and reduce cost and expand service. The Alternative Transportation Services contract would help our existing partner, in accordance with the Alternative Transportation Services contract, this would help our existing partners as well as help bring on new partners and make it more enticing for them to join on to this, to the supplemental providers coordinated transportation network. The proposed contract terms would be very similar to the previous contract, which is two years with three one-year options. The evaluation factors would be weighed at seventy percent for the cost factor and thirty percent dedicated to the technical weight. Additionally, the procurement committee would be made up of a five-person panel, three internal and two external members. Much like the Alternative Transportation Services contract, this is, this has an aggressive timeline. Upon approval of the commission today, the supplemental providers' maintenance, RFP, will issue solicitation on December twenty-seventh of 2012, and will be brought back to the board for approval in March with the service commencing April first. We believe this to be a win-win for the RTC and its supplemental providers, and that it will reduce costs, improve timeliness and quality of our service to our, of our vehicles, and increase ridership, and staff recommends approval, and we're, we're free to, feel free to, well, we're here to answer any questions.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jun Kiliani.
How many supplemental providers do we have currently, and how many do you hope to get?
Currently, we have five supplemental providers.
Do you need at least that many to bid again in order to get your price point, or is there...
Well, we're, we're looking at this in, in cooperation with the, the Alternative Transportation Services contract, so, which that could provide twenty to thirty new partners, depending on who...
Then you expand your maintenance then to compound, but then the timelines that we recommend if we do this motion batch up to what we just did on the other one, which is a three, or two years with three one-year options.
So currently, if we're talking about what we have today, the vehicles that would, would be maintenance, it's twenty-one vehicles would, would be under that.
I just want to add to that also, though, on the supplemental providers, under rights services agreements, we have five, but under JARCA and New Freedom, we have twelve.
Okay, thank you. I was going to make a motion, but I'll just wait, okay?
I was curious, who might we be out soliciting to with the, are there minimum standards of the, the ability of a, of an operation to be able to manage this contract of bringing in these twenty-one vehicles and managing them? And then, on the flip side, might a, the county's yard want to bid for it, or is that something that's even possible, or, you know, I'm, I'm just curious as to how the solicitation will work and, and what flexibility there is in it?
We've already received a tremendous amount of interest in this solicitation, so we expect groups like R O Bus Sales, Creative Bus Sales, people who we currently work with in purchasing vehicles, who have the expertise and the know-how, our contractors for transit VOA, the other service providers, I'm sure have an interest. So I think we're going to see a great response in this particular solicitation.
And who maintains the vehicles now?
It, it could be, I mean, it, it's, it's really up to the supplemental provider to, to find, I mean, it could be anyone from Ted Wiens to Jiffy Lou.
And do we pay for that maintenance?
We, we, we pay for it through the, through the grant, so we pay for a portion of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a reimbursement grant, so fifty percent of the operating cost is grant-funded, fifty percent is paid for by the nonprofit.
So when you talk about the reduction in cost, where it's spread out on anybody by consolidating, that's where RTC will save.
That's correct. In addition to that, since they're not spending money on maintenance, their grant money on maintenance, they could deliver more trips, and that's really what we hope.
Legal, is there any shift in liability as far as what we have now versus what this would do?
Well, we, we certainly could put that in any type of procurement that we do, we can, we can try as best we can to shift liability. With respect to the question she asked for the county, that if you went through a process, it would just plead through an inter-local agreement, but I don't think the county could bid on something like that.
We'll just check on that liability, okay? Commissioner? There's a motion on the floor for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I just might add...
Councilwoman.
I, I really have been impressed following what you've been doing. We always, those of us who want to help in the community, so often we're running parallel with each other, and we're duplicating services, or we're lacking someplace where if we, we got together, we could do it better, and this is what you've done. Instead of running parallel, you've intermeshed, and this is, I just think of the right way to go, and I respect greatly what you've done with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item forty-two is to receive the fiscal year 2012 audited financial statements, and this item is for possible action. The annual financial audit for fiscal year 2012 was performed for the RTC by Piercey, Bowler, Taylor and Kern, certified public accountants. A copy of the report is attached as backup. Mr. Richard Bowler of Piercey, Bowler, Taylor and Kern will make a brief presentation and answer any questions the commission may have regard, regarding this audit.
Mr. Bowler, before you start, I'd like to make a disclosure that this firm handles my campaign finances, so I'd ask legal if, with that disclosure...
That disclosure is sufficient. No additional action is taken.
I also need to make that disclosure as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bowler, good to see you.
Thank you. Good morning. We have completed our audit of the, of your 2012 financial statements and provided to you in the package you received our unqualified opinion thereon. We also expressed, we also provided a report on internal control and compliance, and there were three internal control findings that are reported, and that's right at the end of the report. We didn't really have any problems with the audit and appreciate the cooperation of your staff in, in completing our work. If you have any questions or comments, please.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item number forty-three is to discuss confidential matters related to the Service Employees International Union contract negotiations with management. This item may be a closed-door session, and you might consider taking items forty-four before that, which is...
I think that's what we'll do. The board is going to go into closed-door session. Prior to doing so, we're going to open up item number forty-four for citizens' participation, and this is a time set aside for those wishing to speak to the board. Please step forward and state your name.
Good morning. I'm Patricia Anderson. I, I'm not going to take, I know you have a closed meeting coming up and everything. I don't want to have to take too much time. Number one, you have a great company. Please keep your drivers, and you have to support them, because they are out there all hours of the night. They need an extra break, they need to just get to stretch their legs, I mean, you know, not, you know, it doesn't have to be a time, this time point needs to stop, because simple reason is, is safety first. Vegas is getting bigger, what have you, each and every day, so we should really protect our drivers. Number two is the ID of people, and I had a friend here coming here from St. Croix, and she could not get a reduced pass because she doesn't have a tearful ID. Now, my ID is good in New York, New Jersey, anywhere, even in Alaska. It should not be, we should not have this where the IDs should be in just in Nevada. We should have universal. People that come from England, Italy, all over the country, it should be a universal ID. Their ID should be valid, and they should have it, and that's what I feel. That's my personal opinion, out of state and all the country. Number three, the security. Now, security on the bus, they're not really checking, I mean, they'll say, oh, go ahead, go ahead, I mean, they might see me because I ride the bus a lot, I might ride the 103, what have you. How do they know I have a valid ID and I have a valid bus pass? I might not have one, but they say, go ahead, go ahead. They're not even really checking this, they're not really checking the things, and I think it's not even fair. They should go, you know, I think they should check them whatever the case is. Going upstairs, a lot of times, people upstairs, they're hooping and hollering and screaming, they have their, they have their cell phones, they're screaming what have you, concerned, and a couple of fights have been breaking out on the, on the buses. And I think they should really, I mean, I know the driver's driving, what have you, but again, they should stop the bus or get this, or, you know, they said enough, enough, enough is enough already with this, going through all these changes and stuff. Another thing is the shopping carts. Now, they have given, the shopping, the drivers say, break down the shopping cart. They have been very disrespectful to the, to the drivers. Oh, you know, they're used profanity and what have you to the drivers, which is not fair. I mean, they, they have like, you know, the drivers will say, well, he said to me, I bought this, you know, you know, I'm not taking it out. Who do you think you are? Well, wait a minute, that's disrespectful. You know, so the drivers say, okay, you know, they say, okay, like, okay, let's, we got to move on. So, I, another thing, like I said again, people that, I mean, I know you can't do, the people that live here, I understand that, I have, should have a thirty-day or fifty-day, fifteen-day pass. I mean, encourage it. I know people don't, they get to the fare box and they're looking for change. All right, they're standing in front of the, in front of the, you know, in front of the line. Well, the driver can't move because they're in front of the line. So they're digging and, do you have change for ten? Do you have change for five? Now, there are whole people outside waiting for the bus. I don't think this is right. If you know you're getting on the bus, have your fare ready if you don't have a thirty-day pass. Be ready.
Patricia, if you could wind down your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so, I'm, I'm, see, that's why I told you, I'm so sorry. And so, so what happened is, the only thing about, the strip, the strip bus would have the same thing. What we need to do is try to have the universal, have the universal thing going for the IDs. That's a very important thing, because people here are coming here for vacation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you approach seventy years old, your backsides are subject to all sorts of indignities and settling in these seats from hell. Shouldn't be one of them. I want to speak to, to the bike lane that runs along...
Todd, if you could, if you could speak into the microphone, we're losing you.
Okay. I want to speak, speak of the bike trail that, along Tropicana and the 515. The person, the, the builder that, that did the Santa Barbara Apartments, he did complete the bike trail, and he landscaped it, and it's very, very nice. He did that, only it shouldn't have happened the way it did, but, but the final thing is he did a nice job. We need a flyover on Tropicana, and there's, on that, I don't know if you can see on, I don't have a, a large map, but there's a large undeveloped area on the, on the southwest side of, of the I-15 where, in, in the, in the intersection there. And I spoke to a person, his name was Tom, he lived along Ridgewood, where the flood channel goes into that large vacant land there, and he says that they've been trying to figure out a solution to that area for a long, long time, and it seems that the county is involved, the state is involved, and there's a power easement involved, and nobody can sit down and get together and decide what to do with this. If you make the flyover that... If you make the flyover, that, where it stops at Santa Barbara there, that's the end of Lamb. And if you put the flyover over Tropicana, you can join up again with Lamb, where it's been cyclone fenced off on the other side of Ridgewood there. And that would bring you right down to the Grape Springs, what is Grapevine Springs Park, and there, and it would give you access into the Green Valley area all along there. And it'd be real nice, and I don't understand why it can't be done, other than the gentleman that lived along there, he says he's been going through it for over 27 years, that it's just, nobody can get together on it. And I'd like to see that happen. The other thing is, the, the I-95 bike trail, that for a long time, they, they didn't even know that existed, but it's still there. And we need some easement enforcement along there. I've complained on it, and complained on it, and they go down there and clean it up, and a few months later, it's right back to where they were. They have tires, if you go to Stewart Eastern, they have a donation box, they have tires, they've got cars displayed right in the bike trail. Because number one, first of all, they keep forgetting there's a bike trail there. The second thing involves the city. The city blocked off the bike trail under the, under the 95 there, when, before they built the new city hall to, for, for, they had trailers out there and that. That's gone now. So we need to get those cyclone fences down, and we need to open up that bike trail to the old downtown transportation center, which they're using for a farmer's market now. And that would give the bike trail all the way from downtown to, to Tropicana there, and if you make the flyway, we have the access all the way into the Green Valley area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Just, just real quick, Lieutenant Chairman and Commissioners, while you guys are out there discussing the SEIU and RTC contract, hopefully in the future, we will become part of negotiations with the RTC, because they are enjoying a pretty good CBA, while we still believe the almost 1,000 employees that we represent are still being treated as second-class citizens. In addition, with the split of the yards, you will be creating the third class, because the CBAs will not be identical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Sam Santoria, American citizen, exercising my First Amendment right. I also brought Santa Claus along with me today, if that's okay. He has little gifts for everybody up there. Reason I'm up here, I want to bring to light, the October meeting, was mentioned by Commissioner Chris G., that she wrote along with one of our drivers, Barbara, and she found it irresponsible that the union doesn't allow us breaks. Well, Chris G. might have been misinformed by Barbara, she probably forgot the, she neglected to tell you she doesn't get along with Jose, that she actually hates him, and anything he says, she's against. She told you, we gave up our meal breaks and our bathroom breaks. Well, first of all, we never got a meal break. What we gave up was the compensation for it, which was rolled over into our wages, which the president has been trying to tell you guys, the next contract is coming back. Then, Mrs. Tarkanian, she said she did an investig, she did a thorough investigation and found out, the reason we don't give bathroom breaks is because our union president, this is what he allows, the union makes these schedules. Now, I don't know what kind of investigation that was, but I've done better ones, finding Colonel Mustard with the candlestick in the library. This is just a bunch of hooey. That was a word my father used to use around Christmas time, when the family was over, and we were many children in the room, so he had to say, hooey. And that's what I heard back in October, was a bunch of hooey. And it seems as though, you're holding, you have the people, 1,000 people's lives, their livelihoods, in your hands, and you don't know how the bus schedule works. You're holding a billion dollars' worth of contracts in your hands, yet you don't really know what's happening here. This is very frightening. Now, I want you to take a good look at Santa Claus, besides being Santa Claus one day a year, he's also a bus driver. Take a good look at his black eye and the stitches above his head. He was assaulted on the bus. Where's our security? Who's in charge of security here? Is that you? You are. You do a great job. We have eight to 10 security guards guarding the break room over at the BTC at any given time. Why aren't they out there protecting the people, doing what they're supposed to do? Either hire more, find more money, or tell them to get off their asses and do their job. You could take that $4 million you spend every year, now, MJ, you said, are you MJ? And your husband's a police officer, and they can't get involved in this. I'll tell you what, you give Metro $4 million a year, I guarantee you, they could pop and hop on every damn bus in the city, ride their bikes, throw them on there, and do a little walkthroughs, and that's how you get it done, not the way you're doing it. Also, Adrian Packer used to write some nice articles about you people. Actually, nothing flattering. It's a shame she's gone now. How did you get rid of her? Oh, yeah, you gave her a job. So, where's my job application? And Merry Christmas, everybody, and from that, I am sincere with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the RTC?
Commissioner Brown, Commissioners, my name is Larry Kachere, I'm the General Manager of Veolia Las Vegas.
Larry, excuse me just for a moment.
Yeah. Thank you. My name's Larry Kachere, I'm the General Manager of Veolia Las Vegas. I wanted to speak a little bit about the operator assault, and yes, the operator, Santa Claus, Mr. Norgress, was assaulted two days ago. Unfortunately, in our business, and I've been in here a little bit, that we've seen a lot of assaults over the years, not just in this system, but within transit, it's a growing problem, probably culturally, but across the United States. As a contractor, the best thing we can do is train our operators to handle the situation. My, you know, when I ride with the operators, I see the great job they do, I want to commend all the operators and the ATU, because I know, when you're handling that many passengers, the chances of coming across somebody who has a propensity to violence is, you're going to see that a time to time. At Veolia, we spend a lot of time training our new operators when they first come in to how to deal with people who are, come in and are agitated. We train them in what we call going for the green, which is to keep the passenger calm, keep them in the green, try to deal with the passenger, call our Bus Operations Control Center if they feel something is getting out of hand, but basically, just to be professional, stay calm. We also have an emergency button, which if an operator feels they're being agitated, can press that emergency button, which is basically, call Metro immediately. Now, unfortunately, in Mr. Norgress's situation, he did all those things. He was very calm, passenger didn't want to pay their fare, he made a call to the Bus Operations Control Center, and, you know, tell them, get advice on how to handle the situation, and then the passenger reacted by striking him and then running off the bus. We see those types of random acts of violence more and more, where they'll spit on an operator, throw something, and then they run off the bus to get lost in the crowd of that kind of nature. We work with Metro, and we give Metro copies of the videotape every time something like that happens, and we cooperate with Metro in hopes that they can apprehend this individual and that. Every two weeks, I will say something about Allied Barton. Their presence is a strong deterrent. Whenever we see Allied Barton out there on the routes, it's a very strong deterrent. Every two weeks, we have a meeting with the RTC, Mr. Keating's part of those meetings, and the first thing we talk about is safety, security. If we know of areas that are troubled areas, that we can target with Allied Barton, we bring to the RTC, they send a piece. It is a deterrent to the known problems that we have. Unfortunately, with these random acts, that's a big issue and a big problem. We carry 60 million passengers here, we, we, we had, in November, we had two operator assaults, so we carried 5 million people in November. Las Vegas is, when you take a look at that, one assault per 2.5 million, it's a big number, but one assault's too many. So, I'll just end by, the best thing we all can do as a group with the ATU is continue to work together, work with Metro, work with the RTC, to send a message to the riders, and number one, they need to pay their fare when they ride the bus, and number two, assaulting an operator is a serious thing, and they will be prosecuted by Metro, and we will all cooperate with them. I think that's the most important thing, and...
Thank you.
Good morning. I drive the dude's strip, late nights till 3:00 a.m., and I like the "we" part of that, Larry, because I don't recall you being out there with me. But anyway, it is a problem, as far as operators dealing with hostile passengers. You know, our problem, our main problem is, that by the time we do get assistance, they're gone, and we are bound by, you know, policy not to be able to react, which is fine, some of us are, that's a little harder for some of us than others. The problem is Allied Barton, and some of the officers do an awesome job. But then, late nights, many times I have stepped in to help the monitor at Fremont, because everybody's at the BTC. They're at the BTC, they're at the BTC. You know, Fremont Security is busy with Fremont, you know, so here it is, 2:00 in the morning, and there's, you know, a monitor sitting here, and he's got people in his face, or her face, you know, and you call BOC, and they're trying to get somebody, everybody's at Frem, at the BTC, and it is a danger, it's a real serious danger, you know, and the "we", we just do the best we can, but still, there's more that the company can do to spread that out a little bit. You know, I don't know if it's Allied Barton or RTC, whoever it is, but the "we" part of that, the drivers are the ones taking the hits. You know, we're the ones that are on the front line, we're the bottom line, actually, you know, so it's not to throw the blame anywhere, but it's to let you see that, we're the ones. It's that "we" part, the capital W, is the drivers. We're the ones taking the hits, we're the ones taking the spitting, we're the ones taking the cussing out, we're the ones that are getting really cussed out, because now the fare on the strip has changed, and, you know, we're stuck in the middle. We're stuck in the middle, but the driver is stuck on the front line. And that's the part that I personally have the biggest problem with, on the front line. I love my job, I love what I do, I do. I love, I love dealing with the tourists, but I don't like that "we" part where I'm getting the spit on, I'm getting the cussing out, I'm getting the one that's stepping in helping the monitor at Fremont at 2:00 in the morning, because, and, you know, and there was an incident just two weeks ago, where they told me to take the sleeper that wouldn't wake up. I had to deadhead my bus to the BTC with this man on my bus by myself, because there was nobody available to come to Fremont and get this man off my bus. We, where, where were we?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on this, a few of the comments...
I'm Santa.
Oh, sorry, I just, oh, Santa. I'd like to let you know that I know staff has been working with Veolia and First Transit on a disruptive passenger policy, and I think we'd like to come back to you in January to bring it to you for discussion and some thorough vetting, to address exactly some of the things that we're starting to hear about today.
I'm Santa, and I wish that all of you would get some real, take a million of that dollars of the 4 million you're spending out, and get some real transit police in this town. And you need them 24 hours a day, not from 9:00 to 5:00, or, you know, 9:00 o'clock to 9:00 o'clock. You need real transit police, ones that can write tickets and ones that can arrest. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Commissioner June Caliani?
Thank you. This is to Tina. Could we also look at, I think the Taxi Cab Authority has someone that patrols and drives around and double checks. I don't, that may just be another model, or something that we might want to take a look at, as well as you look at the report. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Tina, I, I know that we've talked before, and it was suggested that we have meetings where we can directly talk with drivers, and you've already started that, and I know I feel very strongly we should have that, because this is a game of ping pong, you know, when somebody says this, and somebody says something else, and to get at the truth, you have to really have everybody there at one time, and this is what you've already started, as I understand, right? And you've had your first meeting, and was it successful? Did you find it was helpful? Tina?
We, we did, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard, who actually facilitated and sat in those conversations.
Right.
Well, I think so. I mean, we certainly learned some things that we need to do better, and we will continue to listen to operators. The onus is not only, as the driver said, when you talks about "we," the RTC has to take the first step, and, and look for areas where we can give the drivers more tools where it comes to things that RTC controls. So that's, it's really been great, we've learned a lot from the drivers.
And I know these types of comments that were made today, were, from when the first one I've been on this committee, these types of comments have been made, and that's why we set up where we could meet directly with drivers, because they are, they're the very gut level of the whole thing that keeps it going. So you feel that perhaps it was beneficial, and you will have some more, and perhaps some of us can go?
Absolutely. We plan it every, every quarter, so every three months. What we do, we listen to the drivers, we write down the issues that they're having, again, as it relates to things that RTC controls, we don't deal with things that do with their union or the employer-employee relations, but where we have control. And then we form an internal action committee inside the RTC to address their concerns, and then we put together an action plan with a timeline and distribute that out to Veolia or First Transit, to give to the drivers, so they know that we've heard what they've said, and that we're going to do something about it where we can.
MJ, can you give some specific examples? Because I know there are issues that you have specifically addressed already.
Before we do that, let me defer to counsel. We're in a closing public comment period.
Perhaps a report can be brought back at a different meeting.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
So that our audience understands, we have to legally follow things, and our counsel kindly reminded us...
No, a very important, a very important subject, but it would be better that it's a posted agenda item for discussion...
So then we can do it.
...at the board and with the public involved.
So could we do that the next meeting, maybe?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing no one? Rewind the tape. Seeing one person coming down, please.
Yeah, sorry about that, I'm a little late. I'm also a driver, I run the Exter Board.
Would you state your name for the record?
Dante Smith.
Thank you.
I run the Exter Board, which means I run all the routes in town. I see a lot of stuff going on out there, and I just want to salute the drivers like we salute the army of men and women, because we do an awesome job out there. Thank you.
Seeing and hearing no other speakers, we'll close this portion of citizens' participation, item 44, and go back to item number 43, where we'll entertain a motion to go into closed-door session pursuant to NRS 288.220, in order to discuss matters related to contract negotiations. Motion on the floor, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.